It is important to introduce himself to us. And also learn the basic structure of a public speech. The evaluator for this project is Toastmaster Hemarani, which I believe she is online. Yes, okay. And the timer locator for this speech is four to six minutes, four to six minutes, huh? So may I invite a timer to demonstrate the timing sequence with me? Timer.
Hello.
Timer. At a fourth minute, a green light will be shown. At a fifth minute, a yellow light will be shown. At six minutes, red light will be shown. At six minutes and fifteen seconds, the bell will be rung, which has already been rung before online. So when the bell is rung, our speaker has fifteen seconds to wrap up his speech. Let me give you a short introduction of our speaker today. He is the head of departments for product verification. He is also actively engaged in outdoor activities like hiking and also mountain biking. Anyone doing mountain biking here other than our speaker? No? Sorry. As a father of three, his objective of joining Toastmasters is to become an effective leader. Please tell me to welcome Toastmasters Vijay for his speech, Life is a Journey. Life is a journey, Toastmasters Vijay. The speech is yours.
With a moment first, I will. Give me a moment. I'm sure you're ready.
Good evening, my fellow Toastmaster and all the guests.
Good evening.
So today was my first speech as a icebreaker and title of speech is Life is a Journey. Before I introduce myself, I would like to ask all of you, how many of you love to travel? Please put up your hand.
Love to.
Love to travel, put up your hand, put up your hand. Okay, so. I'm sure most of you love to travel because according to the psychologist named Kristen Bagley-Jones, humor are nominically, naturally are their nominee. So in a way that they love to travel, they love to, they love the journey of the travel. They like to see changes over the time, see on the culture. And that's a fact of us, which is that particular things well embedded in our genes. So with that, my name is Vijay Washtavan, you can call me as Vijay. So I'm from Skudai. So I got a very nice course here in a way that I finished my primary school in Skudai. I finished my secondary school in Skudai. And I got also in UTEA. In a mechanical engineering course. So to my brother.
You're a dummy.
And I go first, most of them, they go very far away and so on, but you are, you are just here and keep completing your education with these students. You can't even go out of job. So that is, that is kind of it, but I'm very fortunate when I start to work. My first company was in Focus, in Focus, that's like, sorry. In Focus. And subsequently, I've been in HP, which has been given a lot of opportunity to a product transfer. So when I start to do my work, start stepping in my career, I was keep traveling. And my first struggle was to Brazil. That's what my first flight, which is about twenty-five hours, connecting flight, thirteen hours, twelve hours, and been there for six months. So and I subsequently keep traveling at that point of time. So the curse was broken at that point. So that's my, about my career. And, and I'm a father of three, that's what is mentioned by the. The.
Brother.
Yeah, brother. And, and that's, that's of my, my self introduction journey, it's like this. And also, I create the journey to my, to my family and friends. So how I connect them? Because this been, one of the vital things that I need to amalgamate, their interest into my journey as well. So they, they are part of the family and also part of the bonding initiative that I took for this. So the journey is full of trip or trip. Definitely. In a way, I've engaged them with hiking, connecting with them. We do a lot of hiking, there's some of the pictures that we went to the Gunung Poy, Gunung Nambu and some of the places. In a way that, that's where we spent a lot of time together. Do a hiking, it's a part of my hobby. As well with friends, I got a lot of friends that love to do a mountain biking. And also road bike. So I joined with them, this is some of the picture, I've been to some of the area, some of the places that really enjoy that activity together, that's my hobby. And next, why I'm here? Next like this. So everything is take a journey. So to enhance our leadership skills, it's also about the journey, how we get into the journey, get the knowledge throughout the journey and enjoy the process. So the first thing as a leader, it's about your communication skill, how we communicate, how we engage with the people, that can be a base there, any leader. I never seen a single leader without not having this communication skill, a great connection with the people. That is the basic fundamental. So I'm here to understand and learn how to be an effective communicator with the people. That's the first thing. And leading a team, with the right purpose and be a true leader to serve people. So how we can cultivate that skill naturally? Because that's create a culture of trust and holistic engagement within the team. So this skill is very expensive skill for the leaders. If you read book called Leaders Eat Last by Simon Sinek, he clearly mentioned that, that circle of trust is very important for the team to move forward and trust each other. And that creates a magic of opportunity. So that holistic engagement is must happen, it's must cultivated by the leaders. And you should, it take a lot of a big skill to make that happen. And also create a dynamic landscape. As a leader, you are, you are also responsible in make your people relevant to the current technologies. It's not just about you are leading a team, also adding a value to them. So a leader requires a great skill, a great knowledge to keep at value to people. So how as a leader, we can keep adding that? That's one of the area as a leader, I would like to learn from this process. And be a very visionary leader as well. If you look at the most famous companies here, like Microsoft, Nike, this need to make people happy and they start up, they change now, but the vision, the vision is connect to the people. They connect the people to make the vision the greater, we come with the directions. And as last, as a conclusion, leaders play a vital role. And they always be a catalyzer for people growth. And I'm here to master the skill in a formal environment. So that, as a, as a leader, I can keep at value to you. That's all from me. Thanks for having, having me here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Toastmasters Vijay. I particularly like the part when you say as a leader, you want to bring value to people. I think that is what we want from a leader. And when we ourselves become a leader, I think this is something that we can bring value to the people around us. Thank you. Next, our second speaker will be delivering his project. Alright, I suggest that we can redo a standing ovation for the Icebreaker speech.
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody is there? Members there, Master and many guests. It's okay, it's okay.
What is happening?
For Icebreaker, you will give her.
Please, please.
One. There's also anything.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, our Vijay on the Icebreaker.
Congratulations again to Vijay for completing his Icebreaker speech. Next, it's our second speaker who will be delivering his project speech for his next learning pathway. His project objective is, can I have the slide? Show you. A moment now. Case. Excellent. The purpose of his project is to clearly define how Toastmasters ambitions mentorly much. The purpose of his speech today is for the member or for himself to share some aspect of a previous experience as a protege. The evaluator for his speech today is one way aging dynamic leadership for. Time allocated for this speech is five to seven minutes. And if you have noticed, it's different from the first speaker, which is why we have our timing sequence demonstration again. Can I invite?
Yes.
Yes, okay. At a few minutes, a green light will be shown. At a six minute, a yellow light will be shown. At seven minutes, a red light will be shown. At a seven minute fifteen seconds, the bell will be rung. And speaker has fifteen minutes to wrap up his speech. The speech title is, may I, shall I, would you, am I? You can read together with me from agenda. Knowing that, knowing that life is a box of chocolate. And you will never know what you will get until you're happy. Our speaker is a person who is inspired by Chinese metaphysics. To be a better man, manner. He in all his life aspects and to be a better man in other aspects as well. So please tell me, welcome Hong Angel engaging in more for. May I? Would you, am I? May I, shall I, would you, am I? Hong Angel.
Moving in.
Great.
This remind me, almost a year ago, I was standing here. Sorry, not in online, to give my first mentoring speech. Today, I'm going to give my second time of the mentoring. Last time, I was talking about the example of mine, being mentored. And this time around, I plan on to the line, same story again. I'm going to talk about the story is, let's everybody work together.
Okay.
Why we need mentorship?
Because we can't see what we are doing.
You have your eyes.
Yes, I mean.
Why do we need mentorship? Somebody. Why do he suddenly got you?
Because we don't know.
Why you don't know?
Not consistent. We are new.
You're consistently, no, no, you're not consistently, don't know. Oh, Master have a program, it's taught and cool. Everyone ever think about it, why there's be insert this thing inside of it? Everyone take the perfect force to have a speech about me. Isn't it?
Yes.
Right? And then do think about it, this is extremely important throughout the program itself and throughout the all exercise. Because think about it, membership is talking about connection between the two person. It can be one to one, one to one, one to two, one to ten, one to hundred, one to thousand. But you'll be some of the most effective I've seen so far is one to one. Then there will be some issues is, how we become a mentor?
Have you trained? No.
But you have to become mentor, right?
Exactly.
What's the problem?
No problem.
Then you still get mental, right? So how?
I don't know.
Who know? Who is this painting? Good luck to you, you don't know how to be mentor. Anyone? Oh, yeah, you are the mentor, right?
Yes.
How to be a mentor? Still learning. Who is your mentor? Good luck to you. Again, we've been asked to be mentor. But we not be trained to be mentor, right? It's like the same thing, you go to see a doctor. The doctor saying that, sorry, I'm not trained to digest your, diagnose your issues. Right? But you pay them, sorry, next doctor. Right? This is the thing, it's an interesting topic, huh? We are talking about the mentorship. You've been selected as a mentor, but you don't know how to do a mentorship on the meeting. Then ship it around. Mentee. Have you been a mentee before?
Yes.
Who, who says? Oh, you are. Okay. How to be a mentee?
Feel good.
Oh, my question is, how, why is the cashier to be a mentee?
If I don't know, then I can be a mentee.
You don't know anything, right?
Doesn't know something, doesn't know anything.
What is your, what is your expectation for your mentor?
My mentor can answer me all the questions that I ask, or they can tell me where can I get the solutions.
Today very easy, yeah? You can go Google. You type Google, chat GPT, okay, I will answer. Then what you need mentor?
Mentor is my idol. Sure, first, yes, I will try to Google it, too.
My idol is Andy Lau. So again, it's always a gap you see here today, yeah? You want to be a mentorship is extremely important. But you want to be a mentor, you have lack of ideas. You want to be a mentee, also you lack ideas. How to be a mentee? So in between, if something is lost, right? But you have to do it, right? I, it kind of the experience, sorry, I didn't touch about my experience for the more explanation, we don't understand. My mentorship maybe can start somewhere that I've been working. I work under a Japanese company. And my boss is a Japanese, it's very easy. Your way of maintaining is, do your job.
Sorry.
Why it's money? It's funny? It's not funny, huh? Do it tomorrow, huh? Someone see it, okay?
Hi.
So this is how I go. Right? They need to keep punching you. They don't telling you what to do, but just give you a pressure, you just do whatever you think you can do. And then to make this a fight. So this is what I think is the mentorship for you. And also will success thing will happen, huh? They will ask you. Hong. Only one in the group said, right? This is how many times already did? So this is how the hardship we've been through. So by the time I become a mentor, I have a chance to do, I have a new people become mentee. So what do you think I will do?
I am.
I am, right? Because I say that I cannot do the same thing I face, right now, but I know what they feel. Unfortunately, I still do the thing. Come on, do the things. Because I can learn. So after I go through so many round, I feel that something of like is missing. That's why I will see below. Sun Tzu say, don't be yourself, no enemies, a thousand battles, thousand victories. It doesn't mean ask you to be a battle. But the key word here is that, know yourself. As a mentor today, you need to have a way to know who are you. You need to know who are you and then how you're going to be like that. And the mentee also, you will need to know who are you. And today, in the modern world, very easy. In every people divided by. There will be wood, fires, and water. Even though which type of people are you, you will easily be as that on how you build people. I will not allow you to continue, then you serve for the second part of my mentoring. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Angel. I'm looking forward to the second part, so that I can know what kind of elements I am mentor. Thank you, thank you for our, both our speakers. And now may I invite a timer to share with us the timing report?
Yes. And. I thought about it, it's generally divided, so for the Toastmaster and guests, I will contact below. Our Toastmaster Vijay, he spoke for six minutes and ten seconds. And he is eligible for both teams. Our graphic humorous for on end June, he spoke for seven minutes twenty-one seconds. And he is not eligible for most teams.
I need your back.
By your species.
I need your back.
And it did, and it did. Seven twenty-one. Eighteen. Okay, sorry, yeah, eighteen.
Thank you, thank you timer. And congratulations to both speakers. For the benefit of guests, it's very important for us to monitor whether our speakers speak within the time allocated, which is, which will decide whether are they eligible to be voted as the best speaker of the day. So apparently both speakers, what we did, they're heavily mixed and they are eligible to be voted as the best speaker of the day. Thank you very much. Next. Let us move to session two.
Who?
Anybody remember our guest, do you remember what is the second session on today? Any, any guests, members or online guests, do you remember what is the second session? You can unmute yourself. But unfortunately, I'm Korean, perfect to you. Anybody remember what's the second session?
Evaluation.
No. Evaluation, give me back. Okay, so let me tell you the answer. The second session of a Toastmaster, Toastmasters meeting, is one of the most exciting sessions, which is the table topics session, or we also call it as impromptu speech session. So this session is my members and also guests, you are welcome and you are encouraged to participate. So to conduct the table topic sessions, may I invite the table topic master, Jeklin Chang on the stage?
And if the lights turn off.
Thank you.
Thank you, just letting me go to say.
Then switch, no, switch. Okay.
What you think?
What you think?
Toastmasters, do you think?
Hi.
My fellow Toastmasters, thanks. I'm Jeklin Chang, today I'm the table topic master. Welcome to this session. Table topics enables us to practice in punctual speeches whereby we can think on our feet, organize our thoughts quickly and articulate ideas clearly. Alright, this is a right chance for you to express yourself within two minutes. Alright, today's topics are very interesting. Of course, they are all around today's theme, which is what? Which is what? Three, I love it. Right? Three or treat. Actually, I, I wanted to explain it, but just now our CFP has already explained it in very detail, so I, I'm not going to repeat, right? Okay, so for this treat and treat, of course, it is related to a Halloween, right? Halloween is related to ghosts. So our topics are very spooky, stature and ghostly. Alright, are you ready for it?
Yeah.
Alright, and Toastmasters, we try to maximize the speaking opportunity for every audience member. So this session is open to everybody, including our distinguished guests. Right? Okay, so I look forward to your active participation. I may randomly call of you, call any of you, but I prefer volunteers actually. Alright, volunteers are always welcome. Okay, if you want to volunteer, just raise your hand.
Hand.
Okay, can? Right, okay, each speaker is given one to two minutes to speak. Before we begin, I would like to call out the timing guidelines. The job, me? Let's talk about it, okay, at one minute, a green light will be shown. At one minute thirty seconds, a yellow light will be shown. At two minutes, red lights will be shown. At two minutes thirty seconds, the bell will be rung. Okay, thank you very much. So without much ado, let's begin. Okay, who will be the first volunteer? We have twelve topics here. First time. Ready, numbers. Who will be the first?
Chang'e. Chang'e.
Okay, then. Okay, which number would you like?
I'll always pick four.
Four.
Hello, hello, which number?
Okay, a horror movie or story that you allow. Yeah. Say a horror movie or story that you allow. Two fans don't know how to.
Oh, okay.
You're from.
Okay. There's one night. I'm sleeping with my daughter at my father's house. And then because I come back to my hometown and I stayed in my niece's house rooms. And then with my daughter, but actually I can't sleep now because I feel something. But I can see something. But at midnight, I think it's around three a.m., my daughter suddenly wake up and point something. And then she said, she said, hmm, what's the thing over there? And I said, sleep. Sleep, please. And then just try to be very calm, not to be very feeling, like just now, like that. Actually, in my mind. And then, but I, I thought that will be a so kids. Because I actually can feel something, but I don't know what's the, and that's a true story. That's always a threat me from coming back to my hometown. And then, but another day, I also cannot sleep. And I would just try to change my mind and saying that she or he was not the only. She's not going to hurt me. And I fell asleep immediately. So this is true.
Sorry.
That's all from me. And then I hope everyone won't be taking this story as too seriously. Okay.
Wow, that was a very scary story. Alright, okay, I think those nice points all helps. Right? Okay, so now, next. Probably I have to call a guest. Any volunteer from you? Karen?
Please.
Yes. Which number did I?
Yeah.
Nine.
Nine, oh number nine.
Elaborate on this old saying, if one has done nothing wrong, one need not panic at the tap of the door in the middle of the night. Elaborate on this old saying, if one has done nothing wrong, one need not panic at the tap of the door in the middle of the night. Karen?
Who does the old saying about one?
It's a Chinese old saying.
Yes, a Chinese old saying, and if someone has, is innocent, the person would not need to panic about some door lock at the middle of the night. I believe this is some, that's something to do with that sense of guiltiness. Because, yeah, they don't, they are not confined by something they have, they have not done. Yeah. So.
Any story?
Any story?
Any example? Any example?
So yeah, for example, me as a university student, as long as I don't cheat in class. I don't, history is true. I don't, you know, I don't skip some mandatory sessions or didn't, you know, use chanting building for one, for one. I don't need to worry about the, the students. Academy at Canada make him, I'm a student, I don't need to worry about that, right?
Yes.
That's kind of like the modern, modern concept compared to this Chinese old saying, I say. So I think this really applies to everyone. No matter you are guys are university students, I think people are a lot. Maybe even child, childrens. Yeah. As long as we are innocent, we don't need to worry about the effects of our beliefs.
Hmm.
Yeah, so I guess.
That's a very good speech because uh actually when we are talking about this, okay, we are talking about integrity, right? A person of inti- integrity doesn't uh fear anything in the world, right? Including those. Alright, okay, next. Anybody here? Chris? Okay, which number?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven, eleven.
Eleven? Eleven? How do you celebrate? Yes, one. How do you celebrate Halloween? I'm the toastmaster.
That was my, my first. Hi, everyone. Hi, yes, I'm Chris. Okay, how do I celebrate Halloween? Rather to say celebrate Halloween, this is the difference. I'm not sure where I'll be, but hope we have another event where I can join. But let's say normally how we celebrate at nighttime. So be watching. For your information, nighttime we like, uh me personally, I like to watch ghost stories. It's very funny. All the topics was going on and let me share something with you for hello, rather to say Halloween of our, if I may, Chinese ghost month. So that's a superstitious thing. As an estate agent, I went through a lot of houses. But there's one particular house not transaction, transactioned to, to me, but my client requested me to go and then happened to be having a drink at night. And the thing he mentioned happened is actually at K L Damasara. So every night, I assure you, every night at seven P M sharp before uh our Muslim prayer, Islam prayer have their prayers. That particular timeframe, there will be a smell in the house at the bathroom back area. Only that particular place. And we felt funny because we were having some drinks and this and that. And then like, what happened when you go back, have a, have a smell, the owner was shocked. And he actually informed us whereby the house, before he purchased, he also didn't know, but he had a priest who go there at face. There was a maid who suicide. And it was in the particular bathroom. So whenever you purchase a house, Halloween month, ghost month, ghost month is among, in Malaysia, we think in more particular, whereby when you purchase a property or anything, you go, you feel something funny, especially before evening time, don't go for the house. Uh there is another way for you to go, just a small information, bring your kids off hand. In Eko Botanic, there was once a house contracted whereby the kids, I bring down for eleven houses in Eko Botanic, every houses they were scared, they're just like hugging their mom. But one particular house right in front of the M P, the child was playing like crazy in the house, running here and there. Uh that's how you see. So Halloween month might be crazy and scary, but if you stay at the wrong place, it's gonna be a hell every day. Thank you, everyone.
This is a very good um idea how to choose a good house, right? I wish I could start you more next time. Alright, okay, uh can I invite uh the guest from the, from online? Michael, is Michael there?
Michael is here.
Oh, yeah. But this is my. Alright, would you like to give a try?
Tell us good story. So my.
We have many topics.
So Michael join, join both online and physical.
The most.
What topic?
Uh which number, pick one number.
Oh, number, number eight, what? Number eight.
You smell the features of ghosts in your imagination. You smell the features of ghosts in your imagination.
Uh look like if. Okay. Imagination? The gold face.
How does it look like?
How I feel the gold face?
Yeah.
Look like uh when I, no shadow, I think no shadow. No, no shadow. Uh if you look, the woman, uh long hair, but have shadow is people. Ah this I think. But when you look, the people, uh it's, it's so nice, so good, but no shadow. Oh, ah this is my presentation. Thank you.
No, shadow is um most important features uh according to Michael. Okay, next, probably I would invite Michael online.
Oh, Michael.
No, Michael is here.
Oh.
This is my.
Okay, any.
Molly?
Uh any.
Molly, more.
Molly.
No, I think.
She left.
Is it anything?
Any.
No more, Emma, Emma.
Emma is evaluator.
Ruben, yeah, okay. Which number?
Three A M go to hospital.
Number six.
Number six.
Number six.
Hmm. Uh number six, six.
If you are going and where would you go? If you are go question boom and where would you hide? Hospital.
Hospital.
If I were a ghost, I'd go down there. Go, go there to actually try to rekindle as soon as possible back to human. Because I won't go harm people, I was just like, uh because of course, right? Don't do bad thing, just do a good thing. Don't, don't disturb people's life, just have fun, yeah, then try to, try to do some good deeds and then uh back to normal life, yeah, that's it.
I know, yeah, know, yeah.
What, what, what things you want to do as a ghost?
Uh what can I do? Um maybe, cause, cause ghosts got a lot of different type, right? Good type of ghosts, like maybe when, when there's some things that people cannot think of, you can give these a hint.
Forty, forty.
No, 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 we don't do forty number. How to have breakthrough in their life?
Thank you. This is God, not ghost.
How, how you define a god or ghost? It's just your imagination, right? Ghost is just a, it's just how you define it, correct?
So yeah, so yeah, ah.
So yeah.
So yeah, so yeah.
Um most important thing, I think as a human or you are a ghost or anything, you do a good thing, ah you don't try to make people, people hard life hard. If you do a good deeds, everything will become good, good, good people, good house, good family, good country, ah everything becomes good. Uh so it becomes a good cycle, a good flow of energy, this is why I believe. So when I work in hospital, when there's some patient that needs some help, you do some magic, ah it's just a flow of good energy. You cannot do, then you try, ah yeah, make sure that the, actually some patient, they require you, you can get something, yeah, that's it.
I like to, I will continue the number. It shows that he's very powerful.
Oh, good.
Right? A very powerful ghost. Okay, next, uh shall I invite Eva? Do you like to try?
E.
E, a weird ghost, yeah. Which number? Uh we still have one, two, three, five, seven, ten, eight, already have it, twelve.
Twelve.
What do you think happens to us after we die?
Become like that, no? Would be chunky.
I mean, I'm okay, right? Ladies and gentlemen. Where do you think our afterlife? Join me, where I come from. They always have two kind of belief, that if you do something good, you can go to the heaven, be an angel. If you do something touch that you feel guilty, you will join me. And that is what we think and what we, it's, it's like a carrot and stick. If you want to do something good, you got a carrot, that's why we want to, we want to accumulate more karma. If we are horrified, we are, we are scared of, we're going to the bad things, be tortured forever in the hell. Like me, every day in the hell, then you have to do something good. But in realistic for me myself, I think that no matter where we go, our afterlife, the most important thing is what is now, the present. What is this moment? What have you done today? What have you did in twenty twenty-four? We have two months, two and a half months left. So do you fulfill what your goal, your resolution this year? If you haven't, so what do you prepare in your next ten years? What, what would you like to prepare in your next twenty years? And what would you do so that at the end of your last moment of death, you won't be regret your life? So please seize the opportunity, live your fullest possible and don't join me in the afterlife. Thank you.
Well, I, I was expecting a scary story, but it turns out to be a motivational talk. Alright, okay, next, uh online, anybody would like to try?
Any one zero eight nine.
Any? Any? Anything?
Any one zero one eight nine.
Any is the last.
Any is Molly.
Any.
Uh oh, any Molly?
Molly, Molly, right? You can let Molly try. You still can. Molly can, one more.
One more, right?
So one on.
One more.
One more. Why? One more.
We still got time.
We still got time.
One more, one more.
One more.
Any, any, are you here, any?
Hi, Annie.
Annie, hi, Molly, Annie or Molly, hi, are you here?
Molly, are you here? Yes.
Yes, can you unmute yourself?
Show your video. Annie? Annie, yes. Hi, Annie.
Um can you hear me?
Hi.
Hello. Uh yeah, okay, I can't on my video because my front camera is gone because there's a coffee pot on my front camera. So it's not functioning.
Okay.
So uh I can only, I can try, but I just speak, let me see, uh okay, is that, is that okay?
Can, can. Uh which number, can I?
Uh which number, oh wait, I, I can't see the, hold on now. I can choose any number.
Uh we still have one, two, three, five, seven and ten.
Okay, I'll choose ten.
Ten, huh?
Ten.
Yeah, ten.
Do you think your ancestors are watching over?
My god, so scary. Um. How many, how many minutes do I have to speak?
Yeah.
One, one to two minutes.
One to two.
Okay. Uh wow, on the spot question, okay. Hmm, I don't think that my ancestors are watching me. Maybe they are busy um having their own things to do. Um, I would say that uh, how do I say this? It's very, very scary kind of question. Um, I would rather say that um, oh my god, I'm really stuck. Can I say?
You think they are not watching you? What do you think they are doing?
Um. No, probably they are resting and maybe, you know, maybe they have already uh done a lot when they were alive. And uh and also I would say that sometimes um like for an example, like uh in my family itself, I'm like my ancestors, like uh for example, they, they would have left any like traditions or culture. So once um, no, they have moved on from, from this life, they have passed on, definitely they would have given us um certain traditions or cultures that we need to follow. Uh perhaps maybe they are watching whether um, you know, I'm just, just thinking uh my two cents. They are watching whether the, the customs or culture is still, you know, being carried out at the families or maybe as individuals, um we have our own things that we need to uh do it. Uh maybe it could be in uh like, as for me, like uh currently I'm still an individual, either an individual or maybe uh once I have my own family, it could be an excellent family. So yeah, I think that's for me. Okay, it's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
How was that? Right, okay, uh we agree, then one more.
One more.
We want, one more.
One more. TV, yeah? TV. TV, TV.
Save it, save it, save it, save it, save it. Yeah, you take, take a number. What number left? One, two, one, three. One, two, three, five, seven. Seven, seven. Why do some people like to watch a weak horror songs? Why do some people like to watch a weak horror songs? Yep, mom.
Good evening, everyone.
Good.
So my topic is, uh, why do some people like horror movie or horror story? I think those people are perverse. The reason I say so is because I doesn't like to read horror movie or horror story because life is already too hard for me. So I prefer to watch those sweet and romance, people have years movie rather than those horror uh movie. Imagine that your life is already hard and you walk many pressures, many, uh, burdens on you, then you still, you still watch something horrible, uh, disgusting story or movie to make you more precious on your life. So that's how I think I doesn't like it. So I will, I will assume those people, I don't like it, is a because they like to add some spice on their their life. In respect, uh, for for those, uh, I also don't like people who invite me to watch those horror movie. It's because I think those person, uh, love to waste time, uh, waste time.
Agree, agree.
Yeah, before I care, before don't like it, uh, I will stand for don't like the side. And that's my sharing and that's all from my sharing and I watch you favorite topics master.
All right, uh, who likes to watch horror movies here?
The one.
So, yeah. Yeah, correct, all right, okay, so, uh, thank you for all your very active participation. And then now timer, may I have your report?
Sure, the time allocation for each speaker is one to two minutes. For Catherine, for our first speaker Catherine, she spoke for two minutes and six seconds. For Sharon, she spoke for one minute and fifty six seconds, both of them are eligible for voting. The third speaker Chris, he spoke for two minutes and seven seconds, he is eligible for voting. And Michael, he spoke for fifty four second, hmm, it's okay, we go for next. Ruben, he spoke for two minutes and one second, he eligible for voting. And Eve, he spoke for one minute and fifty seven seconds and he is eligible for voting. Molly, one minute and forty second. And last, our speaker, C V, she spoke for one minute and fifty one second, both of them are eligible for voting. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the end of table topic session. Back to you, hostmaster.
Thank you very much, definitely, for the table topic session. Can I have the lights on, please? I think it's always mesmerizing and amazing.
Wow.
Okay, that feels good. So it's always mesmerizing and also it feels amazing when you see so many people, so many members and guests. Within few seconds, you from from they are given a topic, they are able to speak for one, two minutes. Isn't it amazing?
Yeah.
And give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. Next, just now we have heard from two prepared speech speakers and I don't know how many table topics speakers already, so it's time for us to vote for the best speaker of your choice. Please take out your tablet or the device, scan the QR code over here and uh can we have the the link? Yeah, for online guests, you can use the link that will be posted in the chat to cast your vote. So let us have thirty, uh, let's have one minute, I think one minute is pretty good. We'll ask for vote. Hashtag Chris studied any thoughts?
Hashtag. Lot time.
Anyone has any challenge scanning the code and do it and casting a vote? No challenge, I assume. Oh, I don't vote. Are we all done? Online guests, have you voted? Please give us a thumbs up or a love. Let us know that you have voted. Did you see it? Thumbs up, okay, Emma, have you voted?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great.
I tell you, so stressed.
Who says, if you stressed it? So anyone, everybody has voted, right?
Yes.
Okay, so next, we'll move on to our photo session and followed by a short break. And can I invite the photograph of the day, uh, Eric, who is at the photo photograph, who lead the photo session?
Yes, please move forward for your, you did that one in front and the background, I'll take a picture from here.
Uh, the online audience, can you turn on your camera, yeah? So, Molly, I think you have your camera, so I think you just have a mouth. Can you keep her mouth so that we can take a photo together?
In her mouth only?
Because apparently her mouth is.
Ah, okay, okay.
Because Molly.
Spotlight her mouth.
Because Molly is already is spoken by.
Oh, yeah, 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 so sorry. So next time we will see you in. Spotlight her mouth, spotlight to everyone.
So so let us, let us go, let us leave a little bit of space for her mouth to take a photo. Right, 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 right.
Come in front.
Right, 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 right.
Hey, what is the other one? Are you this morning?
Right, 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 right.
My hair must looks like a queen, eh?
You can.
Right, 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 right.
Now I can get a good view of all. My left and my right, please.
I.
Here, we go, we can, right? Okay, three, two, one, the cheese.
Cheese.
Okay, three, two, one, one more, cheese.
Wait, 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 I think this, you need to move this, ah.
Okay. The last picture freestyle.
Wait, every.
Three, two, one, freestyle. Beautiful, okay, one, three, three, right? Three, two, one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I know how many minutes. I know, I know, one, 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 one. How many minutes winner?
Fifty five minutes.
Uh, so, so, um, we have five minutes for meetings, for break. Please come back, nine thirty four. Nine thirty four. Nine thirty four, right? Emma, Emma will be resuming at nine thirty four, five minutes break.
I know, I think. Uh, you, Emma, okay, already you have the phone, but, uh, sorry. Are you, you know, just, uh, just throw your phone, if you may, all time.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
Yes, we will.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
You can come来做一些事业的，这样拿事业来去比较，对，没有小费了。You've done a good job, right? Just you know, like, for me, it's a.
我刷到TV那个。该是来一次了。No. 那我要看的那个是吧，他在哪里？ How you can look away, but your your phone cannot. No wonder, it's suddenly. Actually, one more minute, ah. Tell me got issue. I'm so sorry.
Everyone, please back to your seat.
Hello.
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 Can I forgive?
Once again, our meeting all to order, back everyone. I believe that everyone, I enjoy the foods and having a good chat, but now we need to proceed to the next agenda. This is the project evaluation section. May I invite, how we make strategy related level one to carry, to conduct this?
Level one.
Level one.
Level one, that's one.
Level one.
Every time S A comes out means they'll remind me again, I'm at number one. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back.
I see that.
Welcome back.
Yeah, we are back, we are back.
Okay, cool. Do you know what is the breakfast for champion? Do you know?
I don't know.
Serious.
My love, my love.
老弟，江南。
Evaluation. Nothing like.
Evaluation. And feedback, feedback is the breakfast of champion, my love is the.
Energy in trees.
Evaluation is the heart of those masters education program. Giving and receiving constructive feedback is important so that all of us, including members, speakers and also guests, can become better speakers and communicators. Can we have the?
There's no slide.
Okay, so our first evaluator, hostmasters, Emma Rani, uh, she is joining online. She'll be providing evaluation for our first speaker, hostmasters, DJs. Time allocated for evaluation speech is two to three minutes. May I invite a timer to demonstrate with me the timing sequence?
Yes.
Or leader on line timing sequence for Emma as well. Okay, uh, what's your background?
Okay.
Uh, you, so Emma, you can take a look at the camera, the, yeah, the light, okay? So at two minutes, the green light will be shown, at two minutes and thirty seconds, a yellow light will be shown, and three minutes, red light will be shown, at three minutes fifteen seconds.
And you summarizing the content very indigo in person. And the slogan of the big companies and numbers, yeah, this is. Show me that you know this. And the slide content actually caps. The members on the floor can understand more. Perhaps something I would like you to work on further. Is on the balancing between what. Vijay did well and also what he need to improve on. Because evaluation is beside we give encouragement to the speaker. How to make a better speech next time. Another thing is a. Yeah, besides, sorry, I would like to impress. Actually, evaluation beside we notice what is good done by the speaker. We also need the speaker to improve what to work on on the next speech. So perhaps you can put your evaluation in a balanced point. Because just now I notice you speak more on the stretch of the day. And then for the improvement side, not so much. So if you can balance it off, it's better still for the speaker. For next improvement. And the second thing is a. Actually, we just did one thing that you think about this and you think highlight is a. Vijay, perhaps it was his first speech. He not. Aware that he was begging the audience. Because when he want to refer to the slide, actually in Toastmasters the speech. We try not to back the audience. So we need to find a way how to look at the slide. You need to find your position. Perhaps you need to go behind. So it's not not to back your audience. So to challenge yourself. You can try to write out the good points of the speaker. And the improvement that he can be done. And challenge him for the next level. With this, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean, for your constructive feedback. I'm sure Emma will learn from your evaluation and she'll definitely become a better evaluator in times to come. Next, do you want to know how many positive speakers or speakers you've been myself? I think I spoke, I use some. So I'm sure our art counter has paid a lot of attention. Let us welcome our art counter, your journey leadership development one voice report. Gary here.
The the other thing is. So the first of the art classes, not the word. Now, there I'm a. Better by anything who speaks. During the meeting, I will listen for overuse of the word. And though but so and you know. So at the meeting, I will report the numbers, the time of each the speech that the. Speaker using the expression. Please note the member will be in then. Twenty cents or every which cultures. Who are maximum by again. Which were disposed to our company. Yes, it is as better. So our S A Jason. Chan, one car, one repeat. Doctor two creatures. Our. President Kieran. Three repeat is in thanks. One other for the for culture. T M E. In count. One hour for her. Two so. Every bit, anything a principal and they in others. So.
For their language.
One others. One, the total seventeen creatures.
Wow.
Thank you for the question.
Enjoy. Then I. Five. A. Two so. Forty eight thousand and. It is total thirty creatures. And J one R one O. One foreign language, Ponsa, total three creatures. Table topping master. The green chain who are total creatures. The dream one, three, one of one others. Sharon, two O, one so, one others, yeah. Total four creatures. Please, one O. One one, one repeat, one say. Total three causes, Michael. Two, three R two O. The five creatures. Ruben, one O, one score, one repeat, one others, yeah, total four creatures. And if one O, one repeat is like, total two creatures. Only one O seventeen O. Total adding adding creatures. C B. One repeat, you see. On catches. We Jing. A R H A. Two repeat, you can have total twenty one creatures. Or.
Left ring.
Emery. Three O, so that's three creatures. So, and one, two, five O, total six creatures. And Jojo, one R, one others. Uh, all the the foreign language, Sayang, for the two creatures. So thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Connor Chong Sen Yi, seven, um. Thank you very much, Junji. Shows that Junji pays a lot of attention and he generated a lot of income for our club today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed out the evaluators, best evaluators voting, can we have the voting uh in our code? How? It's okay, we do the voting first, so that there's time to do the the. We do voting first instead of.
Yeah. Emma report already, yeah. That how to know evaluator.
Oh, hey, no, there's Emma report on the meeting. Oh, evaluator, is it?
Ah, evaluator.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm a bit confused. Apparently, there are some ghosts here, so. Can I invite a timer to share with us the evaluate the timings, timing for evaluators?
Yes, sure. The time allocation for this evaluation section is two to three minutes for each evaluator. So our first evaluator, Emma, she spoke for two minutes and twenty six seconds. Our second evaluator, Regina, he spoke for three minutes and five seconds. Our third evaluator, Miss Shion, she spoke for three minutes and twenty four seconds. Congratulations to all the evaluators. Instead that, I will report some of the time allocations for our role player. For S A, the time allocation is five minutes and he spoke for seven minutes and forty seconds. For openings and as the time allocation is five minutes and and.
It's cool.
And the time allocation is five minutes and fifty seconds. Our T M E introduction, the time allocation is fifteen minutes and. We take seven minutes and thirty two seconds, there is my report. And sorry, for the last act of the report. The act of the reports, the allocation is two minutes. But we spot, he spot for four minutes and twenty five seconds, there is my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jojo. Thank you very much for the time we, for some of us figured in time and some of us, we wish you a little bit. It's normal because we like to speak. So can you connect, can I invite you to scan the code and vote, forecast your vote for the best evaluator? Same goes to the online audience where you can use the link in the chat, there's a link in the chat already. Okay, where you can use the link in the chat to cast your vote. Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds, please cast your vote. Okay. I will cast my. I want to go count. I'm not in the list. Where? Okay, are we done? Anybody has challenge? Anybody facing any challenge to casting your vote?
No.
No, huh? Okay, good, very good. So, next is our award, award, right? So can I have this, like, please? You. Next is our award presentation. Before we go to our award for tonight, for this evening. Want to want to present the awards for past meetings because. The reason being, there was some past online meetings being conducted and some of the winners haven't got their prize yet. So let me announce the meeting on fourth September. Best table topic speaker is standing.
Oh, yeah.
But, fourth September, you're the best of the table, the table of a speaker. For the offer, for the offer.
Congratulations.
Hey, look at me, big smile, three, two, one. Congratulations. Next. Our meeting on the second of October, which is two weeks ago, it was an online meeting. The best speaker was Eric Lo. Okay, thank you. To meet the meeting, which was the meeting on second of October, the best table topic speaker was Kang Wee Min. Hey, look at me, three, two, one, big smile.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, I wanted to be to share with all guests. This particular banner, small price that you see here, comes all the way from the US.
Wow.
I'm just presenting, but I'm so very special, even for all the best speakers. I think I need to, uh, I need to do a special announcement here, in view of the time is ten. If any of our guests, you feel like you need to leave because it's ten already, please help yourself. If you want to continue and join us, you you are most welcome, okay? Next, for our. There's a very special prize that we want to present today to someone who has taken the courage and completed his icebreaker speech. Please join me and shout his name, he is.
V J. Only icebreaker got. This is free. No need, what do you?
Thank you. Uh, you think nine? You have cut the line? Erase your memory for the past five seconds. One, two, three, one. So who is our best, best speaker of the night? He is. Wow. Congratulations, Vijay. First pitch, you are the best speaker of the evening.
Congratulations, Gary. This is a demo, this is a demo for you.
Okay, congratulations. Just now, we have heard a lot of, a lot of ghost stories and some of them linked to some life lessons. So who did the best? Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So when you have three, go on, big smile.
Join the trap.
We have three evaluators this evening. I'm sure you have counted your vote, one of them is the best evaluator of this evening. So our best evaluator goes to. Hi, you know.
I.
All right.
I, I, I spotlight to have, as well I have.
You're okay?
View. Side by. Yeah.
Okay.
Me, my seat.
Uh, relax. Uh, smile, Emma. Okay, smile, big smile.
Or Elsa, remove speaker view, ah, yeah.
Okay. Three, two, one, big smile.
Emma, take it, take it. Take your, take your rebound, what's your?
Congratulations, Emma. Now, let us, uh, we'd like to announce to you some upcoming activities of the club, that's the slide. Yes, so there are some activities that is happening in near future and I would like to share with you. The first activity is. What is, what is H S T T? Humorous Speech and Table Topics Area Contest.
Yeah.
Well, uh, this will happen at. Ponderosa Rock and Country Resort, it's, you know, somewhere near Tamamole. And it's a hall of sync too. And it will be happening on the twenty sixth of October, which is a Saturday morning to afternoon five. And we have three representatives from our club and I would like to promptly share their name, which is Eric. Huh, only Eric? One of the club doing this, or if, if. Oh, it's only, it's only. Eric will be joining support, okay? So, uh, is, he's. Angel, Jane. Regina. Very well, we'll be representing Sutra Tamamos Master Club. Contest in area level H S T T contest and hope that we bring. More prizes and glory to the club. And all of us are welcome to present at this place at this time to support our representative, will you go? Anyone? Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, next is our next announcement, which is E W B. Some of you may know what is E W B, some of you may not. E W B stands for English Without Borders and is a very exclusive program. Only organized in Sutra Tamamos Masters Club, as far as my knowledge. So this is a program where we organize. It's a one and a half hour program during night for our members only at this moment, only members, to help our members improve English. If any of our member would like to join, let me know. If you want to join but you are not a member, join as a member and you can join E W B.
Yeah.
Next, can I invite Jacqueline Chang to make the next announcement?
Yeah, they are going to have our R P two point zero, there is more on. Evaluate the team of his actually evaluate with impact, speech and general evaluation. Uh, this is here, it's a training workshop for those who are not familiar with evaluation skills. So you can see that we have experts here. Egan, Vernon, and.
Agilin.
Agilin, Vernon, yeah, all very. Deep, then, uh, we have very handsome Maslow, so we first time. Be our mentor. So, uh, I would think that this actually is very good for those who haven't joined before, those who have joined, you think that you still need. Uh, guidance from them, uh, I welcome you, this is open to everybody, including non-members. We only trust having it from non-members, members are free. Okay, I can see a lot of improvement from the members who have joined this, for example, G. All right, after the training workshop last time. It has improved a lot by lips and bobs. Right, okay, so, thank you.
Because you're doing very good. I mean, the evaluators, you, I think this is the best event ever for twenty twenty four. Because it's October edition. Take your, take the opportunity and join our event, next but not, last but not least, we have Junji. Share with us with our next announcement.
And the vice president, the public relationship, following the like the the focus and yeah, so. Uh, this is our. Social media to catch, so if you, and you can like and follow us, so we can know about more. The information, so also they, if you also can give us the feedback. Do they want to see? So, um, give us a lot of support, thank you.
Thank you very much, Junji, that was our last announcement and.
One more, one more, one more announcement, wait a moment, I refresh, I refresh.
Yeah, there's one more announcement, sorry. Apparently, that was not the last. Anyone wants to complete, have yourself. There can be, we have N M Ns, so here come our last. So the last one of our, okay. Uh, can I actually invite that one?
We have Division G. Harrow case sessions on twenty sixth of October, the same date with the H S T D humorous speech area contest. And this is on that night, eight o'clock at Kula, so if. Anyone want to sing with us or.
Come.
Or you are a singer, you can join us.
Come with me, come with me. Come.
Come, join us and you can read, later on, we will send the link into the group chat, then after that you can register and join us at Kula. Alright?
Here, you are the wish. Showcase your singing skill, join us. Join the program, I'm not joining you. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity for me to serve as your postmaster of the evening, I hope it's fun and. Uh, wish you an early happy Halloween and before, before we go, we will pass to our president for our closing address.
Yes. Come to our end of the meeting. Today, I would say here. Okay, before we end our meeting, I would like to get some feedbacks from our floor, our guest list. So first, I would like to invite Shannon. Shannon, can you, can you give us some feedbacks, what do you feel today? Good, no good, happy, no happy? Is there any, any feedbacks for us? What do you feel about today, you come to our clubs, you got any feedbacks for our clubs? Or what do you feel? You enjoy? I would enjoy the night. I would like to, uh, ask Ruben. Can you invite, what do you feel?
Driving, driving, postmaster, outside of U T F, outside of drive, drive U T F, postmaster. So I need to experience this, good, okay, I mean, it's a. Kind of a, kind of a marriage, trying to have a corporate rich session, motivate and build our confidence is beginning, things are good session. Just yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Okay, uh, this is very cool, I've been to a lot of club at home, but the vibe here, I can assure you guys, is great and it's. It's not about learning, if the vibe is not right, whatever being taught would be, it will be less exciting. So here I can say everyone is doing and. Shout out to what Beijing, I know him for seven years and.
Wow.
Today, when I see his presentation compared to what he did at during our college time, university time. He really did very well and, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
I think this is a good event for both that. We really like one, like nine, eighteen, I understand. I mean, it's so quick improvement after, after in, in, during the very small conference, I think one year, really like, pretty. Yeah, you can see a significant improvement in the way how we speak and how we deliver speech confidence in me.
Yeah, 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 it's online, online, Molly.
Uh, yeah, our online, online, uh, guest, Molly, Miss Molly, are you there? Hi, Molly, are you there?
Uh, yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi, Molly, what do you feel, any feedbacks for our club? What do you feel tonight?
Uh, I think I enjoyed the part where, uh, maybe I missed out a bit because I was just finishing my night class. Uh, the most, uh, the, the part that I've actually concentrated is where. I think when Miss Hema gave the comment to Mister Vijay. Okay, uh, because being from the background of being a teacher, normally we also give feedbacks to our students in terms of speaking. Um, I also learned, uh, the comment from, I can't remember the person who commented on Miss Hema's evaluation. I'm sorry, I didn't get the person's name, but yeah, she did give, did give a good comment. Uh, in terms of the balance of, uh, the good and the, the parts of improvement has to be, uh, even. So I truly believe in that because sometimes, uh, you know, um, a, as we, as educators, we like. Often focus only on the good part, we want the, we want the student to, you know, not feel bad or, but. However, it's actually important as a speaker or as an evaluator to know, to comment on the pros and the cons, so that. Um, the person who is evaluating or also the person who is speaking will know, okay, there is room for improvement and so on, yeah. So thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, next, I would like to invite Michael. What do you feel about today?
Feel so good. Everyone so warm, so nice.
So will you come again?
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all the guests today. So, now next. I would like to appreciate some. Some members are here today. I got a long list, so. Give me some times for thanks all the people here. Okay, everybody, before, the guests, maybe your first day come to our club, before that, our club is not like this. We are just finished our renovations end of the September. So now, all the. So now, all the bonding here and all the paintings is all come from our class member. Okay, so first of all, I would like to thank our organizing chair, Catchy. He is the ones who design and organize all the things from the start to the end. Alright, second, for the painting part, do you guess how many people helped us to paint this whole wall? Let you guys guess, yes.
Fine.
Six. Three, more than that, come on. Three, four, five, six, let me count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Wow.
Few weekends to complete all here, including behind the toilets. So who are they? First one, Why Why? Third will be Jiaqi. Another one will be Talisa Tia, is in Wu Fu. Another one, Tang. Thank you, who is not in today, and everyone is waiting. The last one, only, and is the president of Wu Fu, Xiangde. Okay, all the, all, all of us.
Talia also.
Oh, yeah. So what we after do the painting? E, Tang Tang, me, back Tang. So thank you for all, all the pen, paintings. Okay, next will be our bonding. Everyone, see the all small, small words inside the bonding. Who do that? Guess.
The role.
Chester.
Chester, do the designer, do the design all the things, but the words come from who? How come? Okay, that's wow.
Professional.
History, everything is all done by Tang. And next will be Chinese part will be Jiaqi and Why Why? And next. The counter check, we have a counter check. Done, do uh renovations, not easy, even the counter check also we have, there's a maximum, Mahendran, he, he's not. And also. Our bonding sponsors by Men and More. And we also have a sponsor, White King, from Wu Fu member, the. Paint, white, white color painting, paint. No.
Man, do you come and burn?
Oh.
There's a pen.
The paint, white paint, very smelly paint.
Free you out.
May, may I, since the president passed me the my, I still allow, for, for a while. There is number one is perfect, including us as a nonprofit organization, we did a mistake. Because you can see, there are three repetitive pathways here, they were pretty lonely. And because we are so inexperienced, the counter check, there's now a manager's information, Max Mahendran, he helped to us to. To proofreading check on Microsoft Word file. But then we never sent him this PDF file. Else someone will definitely spot this error come out, because we have no final proofread on this map. So we have a little mistake here. But it is a good lesson for us and no one is perfect and we all long from our ways in the postmaster journey. Back to you, Mr. President.
So, last and not the least, this person do, done the most, what he do. You can see all four red pillar here. Right? Before that is sixteen woods, piece of wood. Him alone stay at home and master all the things by himself and hand by himself. Alone. And also the silver things behind sponsored by him. And not only that, you can see the light up there. He's the one who helped us to connect the electric city. We don't need to find others before to help us. Eh? Some of our HDMI, he alone staying, sitting off here. Doing two hours, spending two hours time to connect the H, HDMI. And not only that, do you know how much for the four pillar of that?
One hundred.
It's more than one thousand. He sponsor. So I believe that all of us in our clubs want to contribute a lot to our club. It's, it's not the money, how much you spend to our club, it's the effort and also the heart that you want to spend for, what to. Give to the clubs. I very appreciate as our president, when this nothing here, and here, and today, we all are completing. And we have sponsors, we have the people who really want to come on a Saturday to help us for painting from the morning until night without any complaints and just want to make this happen. And I thank you for everyone's and thank you for your efforts and I believe Sutra Utama Toastmasters Club have all of you. We will be better and better and better. And thank you so much. And thanks for the guests comes today and our visiting toast master today to come here to enjoy our Halloween night. Now, I shall. Close the meeting.
Adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.